I'd like to call the work session order for September 9th, 2024. City Clerk, please read the roll call. All here?
Yes, all members are present.
Thank you. We have one item on the agenda tonight. We'd like to remind council that staff will be pausing every so often to answer any questions. The item is the review of use permits and standards for gas stations. Christian Williams, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Katie Wilken, Development Services Director. I just wanted to introduce the item. You have discussed this previously in work session before. However, there has been a lot of community interest and council interest in the topic. So staff wanted to bring it to you one more time to get your input before we bring an ordinance to you for action. So that is the purpose tonight. Christian Williams, the Planning Manager, will be presenting the details of the proposal to you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pizzola and City Council. Christian Williams, Planning Manager. And today, we will be continuing conversations regarding updates to the zoning ordinance regarding certain uses that require a use permit and a special use permit and those additional considerations. As you recall, we first began this conversation in a work session back in March of 2024. And this is a follow-up to that work session conversation because as Katie's mentioned, it's been about six months since we last discussed this item. The overarching aim is to streamline the processes and save time, proactively enhancing efficiency. And this entails exploring administrative solutions and staff-level adjustments within policy framework, thus minimizing the need for P&amp;Z commission and council hearings. Numerous cities are also adopting similar approaches, transitioning towards administrative streamlined measures. And by the end of the night conversations, the goal will be to create additional certainty, conditions, and clarity surrounding those uses and how staff should consider proceeding. So the use that is of today's subject will be proposed zoning ordinance text amendment related to gas stations, convenience stores, and clarifying what a truck stop is as we currently do not have standards or definition for that term. On the last slide, I will also go into next steps after this work session. But there are various uses that require use permits and special use permits, including the public-carrying process. And if a future zoning ordinance text amendment addresses some of those common stipulations attached to these uses and special use permits, this will greatly reduce the amount of time an item goes through the process and speeds up the time for businesses to open. As a reminder, goals that support this were adopted within your 2025-2027 strategic action or strategic plan. Modernizing our zoning code and evaluating how to provide certainty, conditions, and clarity surrounding those certain uses align with the FY 2527 guiding principles and goals, specifically within economic vitality, that of fostering business investment through streamlined processes. And in removing the time it takes to go through the use permit, special use permit process and implementing consistent guidelines, the customer can save time and make better informed decisions when considering opening a business here within Goodyear. Additionally, in creating conditions and clarity for where those certain sensitive uses may locate, we are contributing to a safe and vibrant community. We can support well-maintained and sustainable community for our residents for a safe and vibrant community. We will be discussing these items related to uses on separation requirements between the two uses, limits over-concentration or over-concentration of certain types of uses, proximity to residential, and mitigating measures, design elements, and where what happens when they're located near our arterial to arterial intersections or within big commercial centers. As a reminder, for gas stations, they may currently be considered in C1, C2 with a with a use permit and the zone as well as I1 and I2. And the zoning ordinance text amendment recommends removal of the use permit process. Gas stations would be permitted, I apologize, they're permitted currently in C1, C2. The gas stations would then be, if this is approved, permitted in C1, C2, I1, and I2 districts. This text amendment also clarifies that convenience stores in general, which are small footprint stores, less than 7,500 square feet, would be permitted, they'd be basically considered retail after this amendment goes through, and they'd be allowed in C1 and C2. For gas stations within 300 feet of a planned intersection, they would require some additional design enhancements such as the 2,500-square-foot plaza with shade structure, very similar to that one that you've seen on McDowell and Pebble Creek at the the gas station that's located there. Continuing on, gas stations would not be permitted within 250 feet of a residential zoning district or home if platted unless it's separated by a public roadway, canal, or railroad from that residential. And the use would also be allowed as an accessory to a 50,000-square-foot or greater retail by right, such as a Safeway or a Fancy Fries. And no more than two gas stations would be permitted within one-quarter mile of an arterial-to-arterial intersection. No more than one of those gas stations would be permitted on a quadrant. So for example, if you have a arterial-to-arterial intersection, two gas stations at that corner, located at different corners, unless that's an accessory to a large retailer like a Safeway or a Fries. And it also clarifies that electric vehicle charging is permitted at a gas station. As it relates to semi-truck fueling, it would be prohibited in C1, may be requested with a use permit in C2 if it is within 300 feet of a freeway, major highway, major truck route, or industrial zoning district that would require a use permit to be considered. It would be permitted in I1 and permitted in I2. And by way of example, if you have a commercial zoning district right adjacent to an industrial area, that they wanted to have semi-truck fueling as opposed to them going through a rezone process to add more industrial, they could keep their commercial zoning, add a gas station, and also restaurants and eateries for those employees. A truck stop would be defined finally in our zoning ordinance, and it may be requested in I2 with a special use permit if not located within the Luke Air Force Base or Goodyear Airport 65 DNL, which is the noise contours. And again, this proposed ordinance states that truck stops will not be permitted in C1, C2, or I1, only in SUP consideration before the council in I2. I won't hang out on this slide too long, but this is a summary. I hope what it conveys is that as you get heavier into the industrial, there are more options available to the development community. Again, in C2, if they want semi-truck fueling, that would require a use permit with council. And if they wanted a truck stop, it would be a special use permit with council only in I2, not in C1, C2, or I1. Again, the intent of this work session here today is to circle back on the direction we heard from council back in May of 2024, since it has been six months since we revisited this information. And it has been packaged into a proposed ordinance. That proposed ordinance was heard by our Planning and Zoning Commission in a public hearing on August 13th, and they recommended approval to the city council with a vote of 7-0. So that item will go before you on September 23rd unless there's further comments or questions from council. And with that overview of the proposed text amendment, barring any additional feedback from council, the next steps would be for a consideration of adoption at our September 23rd public hearing meeting or a return to P&amp;Z if there's any major changes. Happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
Open it up. Councilmember Hampton, up first.
Yeah, thank you, Christian. I just had a clarifying question. What's the distance? So if this was brought today and they got all the way through, how far is, for example, like the Pebble Creek to the Circle K or the QT now? How far is that distance?
Approximately 400-ish feet from the wall of the recreation facility. So it's about 700 feet from houses.
Okay. And that and right now, we're taking it to 250?
250.
Unless there's a separation, a natural separation?
Correct, like a roadway, canal, railroad track.
Okay. And what was the, was there a 300 separation on here too?
The 300 is if if you were in the C2 district and you wanted to provide semi-truck fueling, you need to be within 300 feet of an industrial district, major highway, freeway overlay district for it to even be considered to come before this body for a use permit.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay. And obviously, you're showing here, there's examples of that of that range, 250 being adequate or already being already being a precedent for that in our city?
This would set the precedent, yes.
Is there already a majority of our of our current gas stations within that distance?
The recent gas stations you've seen have all been generally beyond 250. You do have some older ones that are now closer to residential, but some of that has been because of infill sites.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I was curious. So sorry, I may beat the beat a dead horse here, but so would this would this make it so that the close they'd be closer than they are now, the 250?
We have some today that are immediately adjacent to residential, but typically that has been because the gas station came before the residential.
Okay.
Typically. This would set the new standard of you need to be 250 feet away from residential to proceed.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to just just trying to figure, why did we choose 250 versus 500?
Great question. That's about half of the noticing distance. It also provides you a good buffer where you can put additional buffering uses between that gas station and those residential dwelling units.
Buffering meaning like like plants and shrubbery or things like that or another building?
More another building, more or less, yes. So you have opportunities for more shop spaces and buildings that might be lighter in intensity potentially or block light and sound from potentially 24-hour operation.
Okay, okay, yeah. No, thanks for the clarification. I'm not sure on the 250. I understand the thought process. I don't know if you go 250, maybe it's another number. I'm not sure. But but yeah, I think I'm okay with it other than hear other people's opinion on the distance. So but I appreciate the separation of calling out a truck stop versus this because I think that'll help definitely in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Stip.
Christian, can you go back to that slide that you didn't want to spend a lot of time on?
Certainly.
So and I realize we've talked about this and you guys went back and kind of talked through it, but we've been through a couple of these now very, very public, very emotional discussions about these kinds of facilities. And I immediately go to, in my mind, I immediately go to the corner of Serval and Indian School where we approved the McDonald's. And that is within, that is a C1. It also is close to an industrial area, which is right across the street. So tell me, that just goes, if it's a gas station, that goes up right next to the neighborhood without any conversation in the public?
Based on the size of that lot, a gas station would not have been permitted on that lot because if you'll recall, that McDonald's was already, I believe, shorter than the 250-foot realm. If not, it was pretty close to that. So in the remnant of that lot, you would not be able to have a gas station there.
Swap McDonald's for gas station?
I don't believe a gas station would be able to fit on that lot because I believe it was less than 250 feet.
Okay.
If my memory serves me, it's about 190 to 220.
If it's less than 250, it's not allowed?
It is not permitted.
But if it's 252, without a permit, without a public process, it's allowed?
That's correct.
Okay. I I think what we've gone through, I have a problem with that. I think anything that abuts a residential neighborhood, infill or not, that needs a special use period. The residents in that in that particular area that will be immediately affected, I think, need a voice in that. I'm not talking about Bullard and McDowell. I'm not talking about Pebble Creek and McDowell. Those are clearly way outside. They don't, they're not anywhere near residential. I I think we need to give some consideration. We need to reconsider, how does that look and how does that feel to the resident that's sitting there that's going to be impacted by that? So kind of on Councilmember Hampton's line, maybe 250 is too small. Maybe it is something, something larger than that. And without, I think, without having the text here before us, without kind of going through it, I think on paper, and I'm, and I believe I'm the one who said, we need to do this. But I think given what we've gone through, I think we need some more background, and I think we're going to need some additional, at least I am, some additional charting to see how that, how does this work and with some very specific examples. Okay, so number one. The rest of it in the industrial area, I'm fine with as long as it's not an industrial area regardless of its separation by a quote-unquote roadway. I I think we've got to, we've got to have some discussion about where does it fit in in coordination with a residential use. For example, we approved the one in the, I think it's Laken Park, kind of flat out, simply because it is in the middle of an industrial area. Semi-fueling or truck-stop-ish area makes complete sense in that regard. But again, and I realize the area up north of Indian School or between Camelback and Indian School is within 65 DNL. We've got other areas that are really not and that are, again, the example of it's 252 feet, therefore, it it flies without without question. I think we have to be super careful about that. Again, and it's all about the residential. The other component is this gas station with semi-fueling, which we have seen what that looks like as opposed to a truck stop by definition. In my mind, and I don't know how everybody else up here feels, I don't think there's any difference between that. A diesel, a semi-truck fueling station is a truck stop regardless of how you want to define it to a resident. And it is to me. I I look at what was proposed at the QT site off of Indian School, and I look at what was actually built off of Camelback. And they may be exactly the same because by definition, there's not a lounge or there's not a restaurant. But the the station that was built in the county off of Camelback is, to me and everyone in Palm Valley 5, a truck stop. And you cannot define, I don't think you can define that in words that will satisfy a single resident who's up in that area. And that's what I think we have an obligation to protect our residents from. I don't think there's a single location in this community that we want a truck stop in other than a deep industrial area, and we've only got a couple of those that do not touch residential. So I'm I'm concerned in that regard as well. And I know that that completely derails all the all the rest of everything that you've talked about. The and we've got a lot of infill, and that's what I worry about with these with the neighborhood piece. General, C1, C2, permitted on two corners, I get that, and in I1, I2, a gas station, totally get it. I think we all agree that these gas stations have semi, I'm sorry, diesel fuel pumps for the straight truck, for the the tractor without a trailer, they can, they, if they choose to go there, I don't have a problem with that. It's a single-use, single pump. But as soon as we start saying we're going to allow semi-fueling, that that immediately in my mind moves this into a truck stop situation. So I think we've got to be careful about how we view that in regard to a permit. And finally, and I'll end my rambling on that, on this, just because it requires a special use permit coming to council does not mean that we can say yes or no to it because unless it meets the strict definitions of a denial, it means we have to approve it. So we shouldn't be lulled into a false sense of security that it's going to come to us because we all have experienced that, well, we have to have a really good reason to say no. And I'm I'm concerned about that for the future councils and how they're being lulled into the, well, it came before us, but quite honestly, Mr. and Mrs. Resident, we didn't have a choice, we had to approve it. I want to make sure that that this ordinance does not pigeonhole or paint into a corner a future council on that. And that's kind of my thoughts now that we've been through some fresh, painful public discussions about about the fueling. As far as I'm concerned, I think we're like 98% there. I just want to make sure we get these last couple of tweaks done before we before we sign off on it, so.
Vice Mayor.
Oh, I do have a question, and I've got a long comment. So my question is, you mentioned the 250 was determined by that was half the noticing distance. So the residents would get a notice. Where do they go, they don't get a notice because there's no permit?
There would be no permit. We also, we also did take a look at some of our gas stations, and those distances are about 250, 300.
All right. So there's no notice given to the residents at all because it would be considered permitted?
Unless they are requesting, per this existing ordinance, a semi-truck fueling in C2 or a special use permit for truck stop in I2.
Okay. Well, I know that we as a council have really leaned on your department to improve efficiencies and streamline processes and to which end, then you have worked to propose these text amendments. And, you know, that that's been really good and proactive. In fact, we recently passed one for the public storage. We took every issue that had been raised by residents and made that into stipulation so that way, when businesses came, then you wouldn't have to fight with them over everything. And I think that that was good, and that saves time certainly. They don't have to go through planning and zoning, they don't have to come to council. And so that that one made a lot of sense, but I do not support eliminating a special use permit for anything to do with fueling stations. And I would, to Bill's comment, we've had two recent cases that have really created a lot of public concern, and it filled the room just much like it is tonight to talk about their concerns. And it was interesting that, well, even before the QT case came forward, I was getting emails from residents asking me to not approve the text amendments, to not approve the the decision that would keep them out of the the discussion and the process. And then after that, then the comments started to come into QT. So, you know, we have had such tremendous public engagement because these are matters that are important to our residents. And I think it's important that we as council continue to give them that forum to express their thoughts and opinions. And I don't think we're sacrificing efficiency by staying the course. You know, we don't get all that many of these, and I think your department's been doing a lot to streamline things. Certainly, you have a new deputy director that is focused exclusively on process improvement. And then other departments are that are part of the development continuum are getting engaged and looking to improve their processes as well. So looking forward to seeing, you know, what you're able to do. But in my opinion, we need to let, to continue to let the public have a say in this process and to continue to require use permits for all fueling stations.
Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you. Thank you, Christian. I don't know how we got this far so quickly because I don't ever really recall saying, I want you to come back with an ordinance that's going to circumvent having public hearings on gas stations or convenience stores. So if I've missed that, I apologize. A lot of these confrontations with the residents are very painful, but we need to hear from them because their quality of life will be affected by whatever decision we make. And it's far-reaching. It's not just the local residents that it will be affected. Now, I do want to say that I am not opposed to truck refueling stations in Goodyear. I am not one that says, I never want to have a truck stop in Goodyear because that is not reasonable with the growth that we are experiencing, especially now going into Rainbow Valley, going into West Goodyear. So and and we're putting all of these employment centers throughout our city. We have trucks coming 24/7 to the employment centers, picking up goods that they are going to drive back to either California or to the East Coast, and they do need fuel to do that. So while I appreciate my sister cities, Buckeye and Abingdon, both having truck stops, someday I hope that Goodyear has sense enough to build one somewhere. But I still want the public to be able to have input to it because this is their city, and this really affects their families and how they commute through our city. We do need gas stations. I don't want anyone going out of here saying the city does not want any gas stations. As long as we have gas cards, we've got to have gasoline. So it's just we have to be very thoughtful where they're placed. We have to be very thoughtful to include our residents in on the conversation so that we make the right decision that's the right decision for everyone, not just for the developer and not just for council, but for everyone. But thank you for bringing this forward, but I'm really at this point until I see the ordinance, and if you do cut out the public process, I will vote against it, although I can't say that, can I?
Let's move on.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Laura Tunnell.
Okay. Thank you very much for bringing this forward and all the information you've provided between March and now and through the events that we've had with the other gas stations that have come to light. I have a question and then a comment. The question would be, if I have a gas station and I want to, and I'm in one of these processes that it's not permitted, but I want to add a car wash, does that need a separate use permit still, or how does that work?
Car wash should be a special use permit that would need to go before this body.
Okay. So even if that were not, we're in a permitted area, quote-unquote, then a car wash would still need a permit?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I'm, might be parsing, same thing as Councilmember Stip, with the semi-fueling and the truck stop defined. I'm, I read both of those as a truck stop. When you have a semi, even if you have the big one, unless it's like a personal owner, there's, you know, I guess I'm thinking about, you know, like the the big excursions or the Yukons that might be diesel or the Ford F-350 pickup trucks. That's the diesel fueling that I think should be permitted. I don't think the semi-fueling should be permitted at those gas stations. Those should be, if it's for a semi 18-wheeler, truck-trailer combination type thing, those should be at designated permitted truck stops. I would hate to see a gas station up here that has the semi-fueling capacity, and it's not for the resident getting their trailer or their boat to take to the lake or their, you know, Ford, you know, F-250 or whatever with their horses or something along those lines, then we're going to start seeing, that's where the semis are going to come in. And once the semis come, they will start parking. We may be able to chase them away, but that would be a concern. So if we build it for a semi to fit under there, they will come. So I I do have a problem with that, first of all. The I2, I2 general does not give me heartburn. But I think now we're parsing because of all the rezoning and everything that I do have to agree 100% that if it is near a residential area, I really do believe that we do have to have that public input and that public process. I think that's really important so we can gauge what the neighborhood needs. Gas stations are needed. We need to have gas stations. And we've heard a lot of things that that aren't necessarily correct when people say why they didn't want them in their neighborhood. So I think we need to do with the education on what we're looking for and what kind of buffers they'll need to have in certain areas. I am kind of concerned without having the residents the ability to speak because that may be at a wall, that may be at further distance, if there may be other, you know, or other shops, like you stated, are going to go there. I think we have to have that conversation with the residents rather than there's just going to be a gas station in your neighborhood and it, that communication, I think we need to keep. So I'm, I think you've got some good points here, but overall, I think we need to keep the residents involved. And then my concern would be, a lot of the times, these are permitted, and then what do we do if we already have a gas station, even if it comes through the public process, permitted? Do we let the apartments know or the other multifamily or houses that are building close by? Do we then make sure that they maintain that buffer so that we don't have residents complaining to us after those these areas are built?
Well, right now, the process is for the use permit process, so the use permit process would be that notification process, if you will. And then in theory, that business would be there before the residential appeared.
Well, I'm thinking if it's like platted or it's just, it's approved, but it hasn't been built yet, and then we have somebody else because like what Councilmember Stip was saying, some of these infill projects, things may be designated a certain way, and then the other people, we need to make sure that they know, you know, that if people are building homes where one of these has already been approved, that they know that so that they know what is going around them. I think we need to make very clear to, as other people come in, what is on these corners.
If this ordinance were to be approved as is right now, we would not allow a permitted use to go next to platted homes. So the C2 would be the the So the C2 would be the, the defining boundary. We would not permit a gas station to be located within 200 feet, 250 feet of an unplatted development. Now, if that development came in and platted like Canyon Trails did, and they added 150-foot-wide greenbelt, the distance on the off-greenbelt side would be reduced down to the 100 feet, because they already have that built-in greenbelt. But if we don't know if there will be a greenbelt there, the 250 feet is what, is what would stick.
Yeah. I, right now, I, I'd like to kind of keep the public process. I think that's just really important from what we've had, um, so maybe tweak it a little bit more. And if we could get, actually, when you get through this, a very specific definition of what is a truck stop? Is it overnight? Do we allow overnight parking at all? Do we allow, if you have it, I don't?
I can tell you what it's currently slated to be. That helps this conversation. A truck stop slash travel center would be defined as a building or buildings providing facilities used for commercial truck drivers during stopovers at the facility, and may include, but is not limited to, overnight parking, maintenance of semi-trucks or commercial vehicles, showering facilities, and laundry facilities. It's a very similar definition that we use within the specific rezoning for the project at I-10 and Bullard.
Gotcha.
I could say Buc-E's now, I could say Buc-E's, so.
And I think that's very important, because when we get the I-11 someday, or the 303 expands past, you know, Cotton Lane and MC-85, past that area, there probably will be some truck stops, someone becomes I-11 way down there, and I think that's in the future, but I do appreciate it. But right now, I, I do want to stick with getting the residents involved and noticed on this, so, thank you.
Let me see what, Stip?
Yeah, I, I just have a, kind of a follow-up question. We've talked about, you know, residential versus industrial. Are we saying we want it, we want them to bring a special use permit in an industrial area as well?
I do. All of it.
So, I'm, as...
I'm okay with industrial.
Yeah, I, so, I, I think we probably need to provide staff some more specific direction, because, you know, it, the whole point of the special use permit and the discussion, and as we looked at it in all of them, was to try to speed this process up. And if there is no impact to a resident, then why are we slowing it down? I, I think is the question, but if, and you all know how I feel about it connected to a residential, so I'm not in disagreement with it there. But I, I have question about its proximity and its location within the industrial area, so I guess I just throw that out there for generic.
Councilmember Gillis?
Bill just answered my question, but, um, I will say I'm in agreeance with all my peers up here as well, because I really think it's important, because we have had a few things come here with these type of things, where constituents have been upset, neighbors are upset, because they don't want things like this right outside their area. And then if we all of a sudden say, "You're, you're not involved in the process. You don't have the right," that's not cool. So I think we really do have to keep, um, the residents involved.
May I summarize a few things I heard for the staff to potentially go look at?
Hold on, we've got Vice Mayor here, and then what she's going to say, and then you can go ahead and...
Well, I wanted to follow up to councilmember Stip's comment. It would be nice if all the industrial, um, was all neat and tidy, but it is, it is throughout the city in different areas, and we're finding more and more that residential or even multifamily are coming, abutting closer to the, um, industrial and the commercial. And I think then we've got the infill, that's going to be a continuous issue, so I think everything, uh, you know, bears just taking a look at the potential. I mean, even you think about Camelback, well, across the road, it may be Glendale or the county, and they're developing homes as well. So I, I just think that we need to look at it, and, um, I, I do appreciate the, the definitions. I think that's something that will help us tremendously, because, uh, we, that's been something that's been missing. But, uh, keeping the citizen engagement and then looking at how the location and where the closest residential is, and its impact on traffic and things like that, I think are still bear, um, conversation.
Councilmember Stip?
I think we're probably saying the same thing. If there's a, and I'm, I think 250 feet is way too close. Um, I think we broaden whatever that circle is and say, regardless of its zoning, if it's within, whatever that is, within a residential, then it has to go through special use. I, I'm okay there, but if it's, I'm talking in the heart of an industrial area, like it was in, in Lakin, there is, like, within a half a mile or three-quarters of a mile, there is not even a remote possibility of a residential, then I think we can help expedite the, the process. Which is what I think we're kind of all saying, and I know you want them in, in everywhere, but I, I'm just, I'm not saying blanket I1, I2, because if it's got a, if it's got the chance of touching a residential, or even being within a certain, uh, farther distance, then I think we need to go through the process, but... The other thing, uh, you were reading it, um, I, I think calling out this definition and the definition of a gas station with semi-fueling, I'd like to see those were just kind of side by side, or on the same sheet of paper, or something that helps as we, and maybe it's not going to be necessary if they're all coming down, if, if we're going to do it on all of them, but I, I think when we start talking about this, to say we've defined it, and then not put it up on a slide for everybody sitting here, they, they're, we're back into the, "Well, you got to trust me. We've got it, and they're defined." I think we need to show it, um, from a transparency perspective.
Before you go on, the only thing I want to add, because there's a lot covered in here, and I think you've got a mixed bag up here. Some want it, period, and then some want some distance. But I want to keep on my councilmembers to keep in mind that one thing is, is even if we get a use permit, we've got to show that it's detrimental to the area. Otherwise, you're going to have to approve it, whether you like it or not. Otherwise, you get sued. So we got to be careful to try to get something in there that separates that difference between the residential and whatever, because you got to be careful. You just, which I think a lot of people aren't quite sure, we just don't have the power to say no to the use permit. It's got to be within certain parameters, and I think that's what's really critical. So with that, tell, tell us what you think you heard, because apparently you're going to need another work session to go over this. We're not done here.
I want to defer. Do you have comments?
No, thank you all for your comments. That's why we wanted to bring it back. Um, this is a, an important conversation. So I'm going to look to Christian to, can you summarize what you heard? And, um, we can bring back, um, for another conversation in the future.
So a couple main things I heard is 250 is too close, so you would not want to see a gas station regardless, closer than 250 to residential. Somewhere between 250 and 500, which is our current, um, noticing, you want some sort of process. And then semi-truck fueling should be reserved for at a truck stop, which it sounds like is appropriate only in I2.
All right.
And then you have some that want it regardless, but that's probably the majority, I think, you've covered here.
All right, thank you, Christian.
Thank you.
All right.
I've got a question, please. I'm sorry. Christian, I think 250 is not enough. Do we have to have another conversation?
I'll reclarify. What I, what I heard you all say was 250, it should never be closer than 250 feet.
I think that's even too close.
Well, that's what he mentioned, Wally. That's what he said.
And then there's somewhere between 250 and the current 500, where a public process needs to occur.
Okay.
Is that a fair statement?
All right, one more before we close it out. Go ahead.
I didn't hear that we only want truck stops or gas stations, because with the, we did approve a gas station with a semi-fueling. That's that Lakin project. And there was no truck stop facilities. It was the gas station and to go, and it was right along Highway 85. So I do not want an all, all truck stop or nothing. I, I think that there is a place for the gas station with a, a semi-fueling. And again, and what, if I summarize, I did not hear that we didn't, didn't want it.
Okay, can we finish this up, or you got one more? We're good? All right, we're good. You've got enough information?
I got enough for weeks of work, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, no further on this one. This meeting's adjourned, and we're getting ready to kick in the next one. Please, go ahead and start the...